Let's call the December 14th meeting of the Impact Fee Committee and Planning and Zoning Committee, City Post Falls to order. Will you please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome everyone. Make sure if we've got two meetings tonight, we're starting off with the Impact Fee Committee followed by Planning and Zoning Committee. If during the public hearings during planning and zoning, if you wish to speak, make sure that you fill out the paperwork and turn it in up front and we will go ahead and start with roll call.
Schlothauer.
Here.
Ward.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Kimball.
Present.
Carrie.
Here.
Stephenson.
Here.
All right, ceremonies, announcements, appointments, and or presentations. Mr. Manley, do we have anything this evening?
No.
There are none? Do we have any amendments to the agenda this evening?
We may consider flipping the Impact Fee Committee order with the Impact Fee, with the regular. Yeah, thanks. Nancy Hampi is a member. She's required to establish that Impact Fee Committee. And so proceeding into that, and the Impact Fee now would be probably premature. So it'd be better to go to the regular Planning and Zoning Commission meeting.
Okay, so we want to go ahead and basically just switch Impact Fee Committee to Planning and Zoning.
Is she on her way or something? Is that the idea here?
We're having a brief intermission. Hang on one second. Does anybody want to start a Christmas carol? No? Okay.
Did anybody try calling her?
I'm following our attorney's wisdom.
Yeah, if we can get in touch with her and see if she's on her way or kind of what's going on, but as far as the, we have to have two or more members who are in the business of development, building of real estate. And so
Right.
we have one with Mr. Kimball and Nancy has her real estate license.
Ray, I think you're special, but apparently you're not special enough.
Clone myself.
Me neither.
Two of me.
I don't think that would work.
Be one too many.
She is.
Maybe two too many.
You'd fight nonstop.
We would argue a lot. So we're gonna go ahead and flip it?
In the, in the effort of saving time, I think we should go ahead and proceed with the Planning and Zoning Commission. If Ms. Hampi shows up, perhaps we can put in the, reorder the hearings in such a way that we can possibly get them into.
So we are moving into flex mode that we are going to start as we go through with the Planning and Zoning Committee meeting. If we do see her arrive, we can switch it up on the fly.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Let's.
Do we need a motion to that effect?
I, it's on the agenda. It's, it's, we're okay.
I believe Field is our quarterback just called an audible, so we'll go ahead and move to the Planning and Zoning Commission. So Commissioners, is there any declaration of conflict that ex parte communication site visits need to be made aware of? Okay, seeing none, we will move to Mr. Manley, the consent calendar, please.
Yeah, item A is the minutes from the November 9th, 2021 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Item B is a zoning recommendation of the Stockwell Annexation File Number 8NNX 11, 2021.
Okay, hopefully I had everybody had a chance to take a look at that. It would look to entertain a motion at this time.
I'll move to approve the consecutive calendar as presented.
A second.
Just got a motion or a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, call for a vote.
Stephenson.
Yes.
Carrie.
Yes.
Kimball.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Schlothauer.
Yes.
All right, Citizen Issues is the section of the agenda is reserved for citizens wishing to address the Commission regarding city-related issues that are not on this evening's agendas. Persons wishing to speak will have five minutes. Comments related to pending public hearings, including decisions that may be appealed by City Council, are out of order and should be held for the public hearing. Repeated comments regarding the same similar topic previously addressed are out of order and will not be allowed. Comments regarding performance by city employees are inappropriate at this time and should be directed to the mayor by subsequent appointment. In order to ensure adequate public notice, Idaho law provides that any item other than emergencies requiring action must be placed on the agenda of upcoming meetings, such as Commission cannot take into action raised during Citizen Issues at the same meeting, but may request additional information. It's a little bit longer than before, but we have a lot to cover. Is there any Citizen Issue this evening, you know, wishing to speak? Seeing none, then we will go ahead and move on to public hearings. Again, if you wish to speak, make sure you fill the paperwork out and turn it in to Amber up front. We will go ahead and open up our first public hearing, the zone change. Mr. Manley to present.
Good evening, Commissioners. John Manley, Planning Manager here at the City Post Falls, introducing the Angel Clark Zone Change. Applicant is Rob Clark, representing the Angel Clark Properties LLC. The request is to rezone approximately 4.2 acres in the City Post Falls from the single-family R1 zoning designation to the proposed community commercial mixed zoning district. It is to be noted that the CCM zoning does require development agreement that adds additional control measures that other zoning districts may not have. The proposed location is as you see here in the red area hatched on east of the intersection of Spokane Street and West Grange Avenue. Currently, there's the clubhouse, maintenance building, and a parking lot at that location. There's some history with this. This was annexed in some time ago, in the early 90s, and there was an annexation agreement that was created at the time. This is Exhibit A12 in your staff report. And looking at this, it did propose the fact that there may be a golf course, and in order to permit that, there'd be a conditional use permit. And there were some density limitations placed on it, about two units per acre on the entire site. On Area 9, Section 9.1 of this agreement, it goes on here to talk about the clubhouse, the parking in the clubhouse, and all that would be assessed at commercial annexation fees rather than the residential annexation fees. The special use permit, or otherwise the conditional use permit, that was established in 1994, well, that's the file number is 9402. And this is where you see that they plan on building a clubhouse, a pro shop, a snack bar, food service, restrooms and offices, as well as beer and wine sales at this site as a possibility. Also, I cited their conclusion of law at the time for that special use permit. In the development agreement that would go with this proposed CCM, staff did look at this, and there is, with the proposal by the applicant, conditioned them to their request, these are the proposed uses that the applicant would like to do on there. So instead of doing the full bandwidth of everything that's allowed in the CCM, it's conditioned that only this finite amount would be, is being proposed to be conditioned accordingly. As a commission, you have the right to review this accordingly and either expand or limit what's on that list. Again, there's that location. I've already cited what's there. There's no significant topology or vegetation on this issue, on the site to inhibit redevelopment of it. And it's already an established golf course community, both water and sewer to be provided by the City Post Falls. There are some zone change criteria that you go through in these reviews. One, you'd be looking at the future land use map, the goals and policies found in the comp plan. The staff report belabored it and kind of went through all the goals and policies. I'm not planning on going through all that tonight in this presentation. Looking at the, the staff report did also look at the street classification, traffic patterns, and existing development. But looking at the zoning, here's where you see that R1, that's that yellow, sea of yellow, mustard yellow. There's that site. So you can see how it's zoned R1 with that, the elements of that annexation agreement kind of going along with that and that special use permit. The current comprehensive plan designates this as low-density residential. Here's what that states in our comp plan. So you're looking at all types of single-family residential uses, up to eight dwelling units per acre, and also supports land uses such as parks, schools, and other public facilities. Additional uses, it entertains, commercial uses, provided that they're consistent with the focus area, featuring higher traffic volumes, or located near designed to function as pedestrian-friendly focal point in the neighborhood. And it shows here implementing zoning district, and here you see a focus area. So that's where you'd look at for proposals, is they don't outright, on the surface, look allowable based off the land use designation. You'd go to the comp plan for that focus area guidance. So, once again, there's a site, and here's where it sits, right there in that red, within that central prairie focus area. Many of the first ones really aren't pertinent because they're not looking for multifamily on prairie or commercial on prairie. They're on Spokane Street. I did highlight in red the area of the Central Prairie as guidance that may provide guidance in this request. And then I highlighted what the staff report looked at, the Spokane Street, that it's currently under 3,000 trips at this point in time. But the traffic volumes are anticipated to be under 5,000 trips per day by 2035. There's three other review criteria with this special use permit request. We're looking at commercial and high-density. It's typically assigned along streets with higher road classifications. And you can see in the staff report, it's a major collector, suitable from anywhere from 4,000 to 12,000 trips per day with that road classification. The next criteria deals with neighborhood commercial and low-density residential zoning. Looking at it, it typically proceeds, is typically assigned to properties as you proceed further away from higher intense urban activity. And at this site, there is no real urban activity at that location. The next criteria deals with industrial zoning, and they're not asking for that, therefore it's not applicable. Here's who was noticed, the agencies. Post Falls Police, they commented, and they remain neutral on the proposal. So that kind of concludes the staff report. Do you have questions for me at this time regarding any of the proposals or the uses?
Just a favor, can you go back to, I think it was your second or third slide, the allow, the allowable? Right.
John, I just want to clarify, in layman's terms, they're using the property commercially under a special use permit right now, and now they want to rezone it commercial?
Yeah, you could see though, if I go back to this slide here, this was the guidance of that special use permit. You get the clubhouse, which currently exists, pro shop exists, snack bar, food service, restrooms, offices, and beer and wine sales are a possibility.
So are they wanting to do something new that they couldn't do under that special use permit?
So what they're doing here is like a salon day spa, for instance, or the bakery delicacy, or the clothing boutique, and then you see the hotel. So some of those may be a little bit more expanded.
I see.
Allows them as the applicant to reduce that subjectivity of the proposed uses and have it more finite with that CCM, and actually have it designated as with a zoning more applicable potentially to that use there.
And they trimmed down the uses as a concession because they're in a generally residential area? Is that why they trimmed those back?
You'd have to ask them. This is more or less the use that they intend to perform, and so it's conditioned accordingly to what they desire to run that site as.
Okay.
So we're, we're not, we can't change those? All those are allowable?
Yes, we can.
We can?
Oh, yes.
You can add 10, you can remove 3.
We can say, okay, okay, all right.
And then, once again, this would be a recommendation to City Council, and City Council then would then take whatever recommendation comes from the Planning and Zoning Commission, and then go from there with the zone change.
Okay, thank you.
John, the traffic count that was cited on Spokane Street at 3,000, you know how current that is? I swear I see the same guy 2,000 times a day go up and buy my shop.
Commissioner Ward, Robert Paulus, Assistant City Engineer. Those numbers come from our 2017 transportation, or excuse me, our 2018 Transportation Master Plan. The traffic base numbers were from 2014. They were projected forward. We utilized what was projected to be the 2020 volumes. And then in the staff report, it identified that less than 5,000 trips per day were anticipated for the year 2035. And a major collector roadway has a capacity of 4,000 to 12,000 vehicle trips per day. So it's still in the low end of a major collector roadway.
Perfect, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, thank you, sir. Invite the applicant up.
Good evening. My name is Rob Clark with Angel Clark Properties. I've been in the community for years, done a handful of other things in the community. This is a venture that we just embarked on in August of this year, and so it's time to make the golf course a more of a destination spot instead of just a bunch of green grass in the neighborhood. So the proposal that we've come up with is, as I've gone through with both John Manley and my attorney and just other advisors of mine, with the old annexation agreement, you know, basic, or the special use permit talks about the uses, uses that go hand-in-hand with a golf course. So to really make it a viable business, these are things that we feel very strongly needs to happen. You know, there needs to be a full-service restaurant with that, you know, a full-service bar. We're going to put in virtual golf, which, you know, obviously we can't golf right now. So now, you know, we'll be able to golf year round, not being indoors and stuff. Different areas for banquets, for tournaments, for just even weddings, you know, with the event center, with the site plan that we've got done, I mean weddings, things like that. So it's just, it's a, it's an opportunity to, it's just an opportunity to be able to make Prairie Falls Golf Course what it should be, you know. It's, it's not going to be a Coeur d'Alene Resort, we know that. But it can be something that, that the City Post Falls and the residents can be proud of. And so to make it so it's not just the golf course, you know, having the clothing boutique, having the, you know, full-service salon, you know, day spa there, a fitness center, a little grocery store slash mini mart. Hopefully what that's going to do is that's actually going to ease some of the traffic coming from Prairie Avenue, clear down to Spokane Street to get a gallon of milk, or to go have dinner somewhere. This would be something where maybe they come in there and they stop in there for that. So, and then, and then as far as the 17 hotel rooms, the extended stay, what we want to do is, is provide like a stay and play. So people can come in. I had this year, you know, the short time that I had the golf course, I had probably 30 since August, 30 different groups that what they do is they come and they hit about three different golf courses, play the different golf courses. So it would be awesome to just have them come, stay at our place, golf at our course, and then go hit the Coeur d'Alene, or go hit Highlands, or, so. I can't really add to, I think I've added enough to what John has, has described, so I'm, I'm here to answer any questions.
Questions at all? I guess I have a question. Mr. Clark, maybe define a little bit more. I know within the initial piece that I had John pull up at said hotels, but I see the words extended stay sleeping units with typical support and amenity spaces. When we say extended stay, what are we looking at? Is this a, because it doesn't say hotel.
It doesn't, it doesn't say hotel, and we, we know that people are steering, me personally, let me speak for myself. Me personally, I stay at more Airbnbs than I do hotels. And so that's, I mean, we can call it an Airbnb if you want, but it's just going to be something where it'll be short stays, people will stay for a few days, you know, maybe a week. But again, it'll be short stay type, type setup that we'll be able to offer those packages, so.
And your Exhibit A3 here, kind of a site plan, there really doesn't show room for that unless you're going pretty vertical. Is that the plan, or?
Yeah, it would be a second story. So this is only, this is only going to be two stories. So on the first floor would be all of the commercial. So you'd have the clubhouse, restaurant, bar, virtual golf, and then the other, you know, the other retail spots. Then the second story would be those 17, I mean, for the sake of everybody being on the same, 17 Airbnbs, hotels.
Hotel.
I just wanted to make sure, because you started to say a word, it sounded like you were starting to say a word, I wanted to make sure that we were avoiding. And that was apartments.
Oh, no, heavens, no.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because it sounded like it was starting, I wanted to make sure.
No, no.
Because absolutely, I, I want to make sure that, that, yeah, that this is defined, because if we're looking at Airbnbs, that's one thing.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and you say for your packages, Mr. Clark, but is the 17 rooms, are they going to be solely for package, golf packages, or is it going to end up being just a hotel? You know what I mean? Like down the road, is there a plant, you know what I'm saying? Because quickly it'll turn into, into space that's limited, will quickly fill up by whoever wants it, you know what I mean?
Correct. I mean, obviously, the, our first, our first choice would be to have stay and play packages, that'd be great. But obviously, we don't want empty spaces sitting there and, and not creating revenue for us, so.
Any other questions? No? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Public comment, in favor?
None.
Neutral?
None.
Opposed?
We have just one.
Okay. Again, it's been a while, and I always like to try to preface that it's been a long day, so if I butcher your name or mispronounce it in any fashion, please don't take it personal. In opposition, does not wish to speak Suzanne Wass, says the zoning request includes a 17-unit hotel. The current operator of the golf course has been non-responsive regarding security lighting that is intrusive to existing homes. New structures such as the hotel will drastically increase intrusive lighting. Also, the visual skyline will be obscured by the present view of homeowners reducing land value by limiting the present amount of views both day and night. Okay, appreciate the information. There was no other? Okay. Mr. Clark, any, we say rebuttal, but it's not necessarily rebuttal. Is there any other things that you want to add, sir? If, yep.
I guess in closing, you know, this is, I could pull the, I could pull the figures for the last 25 years. The golf course has not been a profitable venture. I know that I can make it a profitable venture, and, and it will be very tasteful. And as far as obscuring people's views, it just, it won't happen, so.
Okay, all right, thank you, sir. Commissioners, any questions for staff? Anyone? No, nothing else? Any further? Okay, then I will go ahead and close it out and open it up for comment. Ray?
Sure.
You talked first.
I did.
Go for it.
This is kind of a, definitely a unique one when it comes to our comprehensive plan. It's almost as if we missed a node because it was already there, when it comes to a commercial node and, and what kind of uses are there. I have a lot of professional history with Prairie Falls Golf Course with the previous owners. And I know that they have struggled for a long, long time, to the point where I know the previous owners have considered tearing out the entire golf course and redeveloping it as residential. It's good to see that the new owner is looking at keeping it as a golf course and wants to instead go full speed ahead and create it more of a destination. And I think this is a, a great way to do that in a way that benefits the community as a whole. It creates some very neighborhood-friendly type businesses where somebody who lives in the vicinity can walk to a day spa. They can walk to a little full-service restaurant just right up the street from their house. They can go have a beer and not drink and drive, but walk home, things like that. The little boutique, the hotel, if it's only a two-story building, that's what, a two-story building is the same as a two-story house, it's, which is allowed in a residential zone. So, you know, from that standpoint, their site plan looks like it's, it's fairly straightforward. That double-wide trailer they've been using for the last 30 years as a temporary pro shop is, is probably long overdue in making Prairie Falls Golf Course a, more of a destination. So I, I think it's a good thing. I think that our, I think it's, with regards to the comprehensive plan, I think the staff report pushes us towards that. It's a CCM zone on a major collector. It's at the intersection. I think Grange Road is also a collector. So it's at the intersection of two collectors. And it's already a commercial use. And so it's, and the commercial use is not significantly changing. It's just, it's expanding and adding facets that weren't specifically dreamt of in 1994, when it was originally approved. So I think it's a good thing.
Speaker Joe?
I like most all of the thought process there and what they want to do there and stuff, but I do have a problem with a hotel. I just think that's a residential area, and I know that the, the golf courses is commercial type use, and, but that brings value to the neighborhood, to most neighborhoods. type use and, but that brings value to the neighborhood, to most neighborhoods. I just kind of have an issue with a hotel there. I think it, I just, I have to think on that and be convinced a little bit that that's not going to be a, a big negative for people who live around there to have a, a hotel right there in the residential area.
James?
Yeah, I think my initial concern was you say hotel and, okay, that's all residential right there, but if it's on the second floor of a two-story building that's going to be there, it's already, it's already being used for commercial. I don't think it's going to look like a hotel. It's just going to look like an extension of that clubhouse where you got a bunch of all these other mixed uses in there. You know, I had the same thought about the lighting too, but, you know, with all the, the rules and regulations around that, I'm sure the lighting can be mitigated and, and all those could be addressed during the development. Other than that, I, I like the, like the whole idea and it'll be interesting to see how it turns out.
Kevin?
I like, I think my main concern would be the grocery stores, convenience sales in the hotel. You know, I know in a CCM you can go thirty-five feet and that can be manipulated in many ways, you know? So I think, I don't know, what I'd really like to see is a drawing of how it lays out and how it's presented and where the, where your rooms plan on going. Are they going over by the shop, by the cemetery? Are they going to go out in the middle, a hole number eight? You know, because just by seeing the list doesn't really show us how it's going to be laid out. And then once we approve it, we're the guilty ones, you know? So I'd kind of like to have a little information on that too before I voted on it.
I think there's a site plan in the staff report.
Is there?
Yep.
There is. Ross?
Yeah, I pretty much am right in line with everybody else here. The first, all of the commercial uses, home run, love to see it.
Oh, yeah.
The, the hotel aspect, something about it feels kind of funny, but, you know, the argument to make the property viable for the town, it's definitely an asset. We need it there. And so I'm, I think it's, you know, the area probably, it should be commercial. And I think that if it was, say, twenty-five feet, I think that's pretty reasonable. I don't know if there's any mechanism to, to add that so that it is two-story. That would be my, that would be my thought.
Hi, Nancy.
Hi. Since I came in late, I just don't feel like it would be fair for me to comment on it.
Completely respect.
On this particular hearing, so.
Yep. I would agree with what many folks are saying. One, the golf course, I mean, it needs an upgrade. I think having a big pro-shop, I've been at a lot of golf courses, pro-shops do well. The idea of a full-service restaurant, bar, I mean, it's a slam dunk. It needs to be there if you look at the ability to serve that particular area, no question. Virtual golf, obviously, it's hot as can be. Everything I say, yes, 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 until I get to the last piece, and that's the hotel or the extended stay sleeping units. I agree with Ross, something doesn't feel right. So I look, do we have some kind of code enforcement and how do you manage that to where we make sure that extended stay is no more than five days, ten days, fourteen days? You can't manage it. I don't know of a easy way to do that. So to me, I look at this whole piece and think, yes, I would completely a hundred percent support it if we took out three-point-one-point-one-one, the hotel piece, if it wasn't in there. I'd have no question, but I don't like the hotel piece. That's just my two cents. So if we want to have continued further discussion or if someone would like to make a motion?
What do you think, Ray? Is there a middle ground that can be written in there?
I kind of see as a hotel as a residential use. I mean, even though it's commercial, it's kind of this mix between a, I, I think of templates.
What's the residential height restriction?
Thirty-five feet. So.
So it's the same either way?
A single, yeah, a two-story house in R1 can be thirty-five feet. That's two floors plus a pitched roof. And that's typically, most houses are in that thirty-two, thirty-three foot range, right in there. Depending on how the, yeah, so it's, it's a two-story and this is probably, I don't know if they go.
No way it's going to be more than two unless it was.
No, it's not going to be a three-story, it's not going to be like the three-story apartments that we have, you know, down there across by the Centennial Trailhead or anything. It's, it's this building size.
Being a development agreement, you can add that condition of it being two stories.
Right. So maybe that would be something when, and downward, we already have in our code downward directed lighting though, right?
For multifamily, for sure, we have caps. Typically, they do do downward lighting.
So I, I mean, I think that's probably the thing. I mean, and I, I see hotel and I think hotel. I don't think, and then I just think, well, if they're going to do wedding parties, how awesome would that be?
Yeah.
You know, to do the weddings, you know, weddings and a little stay and the boutique thing. It's kind of like a, I don't know. I mean, I can't think of an example locally of something that's like that, but I guess the closest thing would be like one of the casinos, like the, but that's, scale is way off for that. I mean, if it's seventeen rooms above a, above the clubhouse and it's a, I, I mean, those could just as easily be offices. And we would, the traffic would be probably the same or more. You wouldn't really notice the difference. And I see it more as an amenity that, than something that I guess would, I don't see it being abused. I mean, maybe, maybe in the long-term future, but I see it as, you know, we're short on hotel space in this area anyway.
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, I see it as, you know, Iron Man shows up and Iron Man athletes stay here and, or whatever. I mean, there's lots of, I see as lots of, I, I guess I just see it as a residential type use. I don't see much of a, I see it as a blend. It's not commercial per se. But that's just my thoughts.
Well, if we're going to error any way, I would say error on the side of the property owner being able to make their property viable, that's for sure, so.
Any other thoughts, questions? Okay. Well, if there's no other thoughts or questions, I would entertain a motion at this time. Yeah, the, I'm sorry, the procedure as defined at the very, very beginning is that the city comes up, very much like a typical hearing, the city comes up, applicant comes up, then individuals that are for, neutral or against have the opportunity to submit and come up and speak, then time for rebuttal, and then we have the opportunity to ask questions. So unfortunately, we've moved past that. I guess in order for her to come up and speak, we would need to reopen the hearing. Is that correct?
You'd have to reopen the hearing and then you'd, depending on if it's in favor, neutral or opposed, you'd still have to afford the applicant opportunity to rebut anything.
I just have a question.
Okay. All right. We'll have a city staff touch base with you.
Just so everyone knows, this is just a recommendation to city council. City council won't be making the official decision on this, so there'll be a, a second public hearing. So if you missed your shot to talk now, you've got a second one. That said, I think I'd, I would make the motion to recommend approval of zone change, RZNE zero-zero-one-zero-dash-two-zero-two-one, with the uses described in the staff report, limiting the hotel use to a two-story hotel and limiting the hotel stay length to less than one month.
I'll second that.
Got a motion, a second call for vote?
I recuse myself.
Okay. Um, Schlaauer?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Davis?
No.
Kimball?
Yes.
Carrie?
No.
Stephenson?
Yes.
All right. So move, do we need to, Field, do we need to take a break or are we able to just shift gears?
I think we can shift gears. We'll just convene the impact fee advisory committee unless you'd like to take a break.
Yes, no? We're good? Mr. Manley? Okay. All right. Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen, we are now switching hats. We are no longer commissioners. We are now impact fee committee, and we will go ahead and open that piece. Let me switch my piece of paper to impact fee committee. And I believe our action item is just simply get an update on the draft, so we'll invite the, oh.
You may want to, we do have other public hearings. I don't know.
Yes, we do still have another public hearing if anyone cares to stay for that one.
I don't want to give the impression that we're done with the other one.
And by no means do we want to give the impression that the impact fee report is not a hot topic by them leaving. That is not the case. All right. And we're back. So we'll go ahead and invite the presenter to come up and present the draft report, fire, rescue, and impact fee study.
Commissioners, good evening. Chris Way, Cootney County Fire and Rescue. I'm just simply going to introduce the process. So last year, the legislature changed a little bit of the impact fee law to allow fire districts to collect impact fees or to levy impact fees, and this is something we haven't done. I know that the topic of growth has been significant and that people feel very strongly that growth should pay for growth. So this is a mechanism for growth to pay for growth. And so we, amongst all, actually, all of the fire districts in Cootney County, as well as the EMS system who's represented here tonight as well, have contracted with Galena Consulting to work through the impact fee study. We've done a comprehensive capital improvement plan over a ten-year period, and I'm going to introduce at this point Ann Westcott from Galena Consulting, who has been our project manager for them through this process. So, Ann.
Commission chair, member of the commission, I guess you're not the commission at this moment, you're the advisory committee. Thank you for shape-shifting for us this evening. Try to lock in a lot of council meetings in one night, and sometimes it doesn't really work out that well, so. You do, I believe, have in your package the two reports that have been submitted to the city. One is for the fire and rescue district and one is for the EMS services. Since you have impact fees already in your community, you're familiar with this process. My reporting format might be a little different than what you're used to, but I'll go through the main points with you. Essentially, as the chief has said, we are talking about capital improvement programs for the fire district and for the EMS district that would serve the needs of growth over the next ten years, would ensure that new growth that comes to this district and, and by that included in the City of Post Falls would be paying its proportional share of any capital items that were needed to ensure that your level of service, which is the response time, does not decrease, in this case, actually become longer as growth occurs in your community. So I'm going to encourage you to go to page eight of my report. The first section is mostly just background and a lot of legal compliance. Page eight shows you our, our basic growth projections, kind of the point in which we're starting, what kind of growth are we looking at? And this is, I'm sorry, in the Cootney County Fire and Rescue District report. They all look exactly the same. So we have taken information from the census, from building permits, from the assessor's office with the county, variety of other sources to make conclusions about not only what your existing residential units and non-residential square feet are, but what we project to be happening ten years from now. Obviously, we were not going to be exact on the mark, which is why we will come back to the DFAX throughout all of the districts annually to make sure that these numbers, if they need to be updated, we can do so. But we're looking about ninety-two hundred new residential units in the Cootney County Fire and Rescue District. About seventy-five percent of that is in the City of Post Falls. So clearly, we know that you are, are growing at a more rapid rate than many other parts of the county, and so it creates a little bit more urgency in this area. If we skip ahead to the next page, page nine, and we first want to know what the level of service is for the fire district. The fire district that serves Post Falls provides a response time of seven minutes and thirty seconds. Sometimes a little faster than that within the City of Post Falls, a little bit longer out in the more unincorporated areas, but that's the level of service that we're trying to protect with impact fees paying for the capital improvement program. I do take one extra step. Not all people do this, but I like to look on page ten at what current assets the district has that allow them to provide a seven-minute response, because we know that where the stations are and what kind of apparatus they have in them makes a lot of difference in how fast they can get to a call within their district, within the city. You'll see on page ten that the district currently has forty million dollars worth of assets, of capital assets, stations, apparatus, and equipment with which to provide the seven-plus-minute response. And if I take all of the existing households within the district and I divide that into that number, each existing household, including all of you in this, in Post Falls, basically own or have paid in your proportional share of about fifteen-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars. That's your portion of that forty million dollars. And I run this amount just so that we can make sure that we are not asking growth to pay significantly more than what existing households have already paid, unless I can explain the difference, and we'll see how that works out in the next page. And please do just interrupt me if you have questions. Page eleven is again the capital improvement program. You're probably all aware that the Cootney County Fire and Rescue District floated a bond to, to replace existing stations. And so there's, you know, there's two parts of, we build capital to replace things that are old or deficient or in the wrong place, and then we build things to manage growth and to make sure that level of service doesn't decline. I believe the chief was very clear when they did the public outreach part for that bond, that the bond was asking existing taxpayers to pay to improve the existing fire stations and that they would be seeking impact fees to pay for the growth-related fire. So you will see here there's a mixture of these facilities of which stations are bond-funded, and they are zero percent growth because those stations already had deficiencies and/or the district had made a choice to include those in the bond funding. But then you'll see new station for growth, Station Six and Station Seven. Those two stations are a hundred percent growth, so three-point-eight million dollars for each of those stations would, we are proposing would be coming, would be covered by impact fees, where the stations, the three stations above would be coming from their general funds or property tax dollars through that bond. Then you'll see a new station, let's see, where am I? Fireboat house. So a need for a fireboat house is somewhat there at this point, but growth is really pushing over the need, particularly as we're talking about vertical spray being able to provide along the lakeside. So that is fifty percent impact fee eligible, acknowledging that they sort of needed it right now, but growth really was pushing them over the edge. So growth and non-growth will split that. Update Station One and the outdoor classroom and storage, one is bond-funded, the other one is an update, and is an update, it's not impact fee eligible. But then you'll look down the list of apparatus. For the new stations that are being built with impact fees, they will need additional apparatus in those where you see a hundred percent. Those are ones we've determined to be growth-eligible, and they're calculated into the fees. Where we see zero, that's where we're replacing existing assets. That's not growth's problem, so those would not be included in the impact fees. Radios, the self-contained breathing apparatus, and extracation equipment because it lasts at least ten years, where that is growth-related, so in this case, the new radios for growth are included. So you'll see that the district has a thirty-two-point-two-million-dollar, ten-year capital improvement plan, and twelve-point-two-million dollars of that is impact fee eligible. So when we go to page twelve, I take the twelve-point-two-million dollars, break it out by the portion of your community that's residential versus non-residential, and divide it by the ninety-two-hundred-and-sixteen new homes and one-point-eight-million non-residential square feet. And that then concludes that if every new house that were built in Post Falls, not just in Post Falls, in the entire district, but it would be the same fee within Post Falls. Every new residential household would pay twelve-hundred-and-seven dollars, non-residential would be sixty cents. Now I go back for a minute and just compare that to what people have already paid in. We said that each of you who are already here paid in fifteen-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars per household, so that twelve-hundred-and-seven is a pretty nice connection. It shows that we've made a pretty good ratio between the relationship of a house and the amount of capital it demands. And it was seventy-nine cents per non-residential and we're at sixty. So I like when the math comes out independently on both sides at a number that makes sense to me intuitively, so. What we are here to do at this evening is, as I think the chief mentioned, I'm working with all of the fire districts. So in some of the fire districts, they have no cities that they serve or just going to the county's advisory committee. In those districts where there are cities to serve, we have established new advisory committees or we are grateful to use one that's already in existence with cities like your own. So we are bringing this to you essentially saying we would like a recommendation from this committee to the city as to whether or not to accept this report and the proposed CIP and fees. But let me do the same thing on the EMS side, so you know, because these will two, the two will go together. They have to be separate because they are separate taxing districts. You'll look at page eight, you'll see that because the EMS district covers the entire county, there are far more new residential units. We're looking at about 30,000 new residential units in the county overall. We look to page 10, and we know that the EMS district has about $13.5 million worth of eligible assets. And these are the existing administration building and shop that they have, plus all of the ambulances that they have loaded with all of the expensive medical equipment. When you look at page 11, you'll see that the EMS district chief has decided that. So right now, when the paramedics are in the field and they need to go back to refill drugs, they have to go to the hospital, they pick them up, and they get back in their ambulance. This is a way to create a smaller dispensary where the existing administration office is, so that ambulances that are out in the field don't have to come all the way to the hospital and then go all the way back into their district. They can come to one of, to an alternate source to pick up those controlled drugs and be able to get then back out into the field a little bit faster. That obviously, if you weren't growing at all, you wouldn't need to. You just continue the same practice that you have, and this would not be necessary. So that project, almost $500,000, is impact fee eligible. They're also going to build an additional shop, addition to their shop for vehicle storage and maintenance. About 75% of the reason for that project is because there are out of space right now and it's not meeting their needs. What we did then was determine how many additional ambulances would need to be rotating through that new facility that were associated with growth, and that's where the 25% comes from. And then you'll see they are planning to buy five additional ambulances to serve the growth in medical calls throughout the county. An additional critical care ambulance, additional response vehicle, those are the three growth-related apparatus. And then continuing to replace their fleet of ambulances is not impact fee eligible. All of this equipment, though, that goes on those ambulances is impact fee eligible. And out of a $14.2 million capital improvement plan, 4.3 million of it would be impact fee eligible. And that would make, every household would be responsible for $132. What I mean is every new residential building permit, is what I'm speaking about, 132.7 cents for non-residential. So if both of these capital improvement plans were to be approved by Post Falls and the correlating impact fee structures, on a new house, you would be paying 1,200, 1,300, and about $1,500 per household. How does that compare to the rest of the community? This is kind of new territory in northern Idaho to be looking at fees for fire. In southern Idaho, where I have dozens of clients, we are looking at rural fire fees coming in around 1,500 to 2,000. That's where we're really seeing. It was lower four years ago, but then cost increases have come up so significantly that the cost of construction of stations has brought it in line with these calculations. One of the reasons that Cootney County Fire and Rescue is a little lower is one, because they're leveraging the bond to pay for these non-impact fee eligible. And also, the chief is really, he doesn't like to pay a lot of money for things. He's really frugal, so. Some people pay more for their stations than your chief does, so I guess that's, that's good for you. Kind of rushed through that. Do you have any questions about how we came up with this material? Again, we are just hoping to get the input from your advisory committee if you are comfortable with these reports. If you could move them on to council, which would actually mean, after we briefed the council, if they requested that, we would come back to you again as P and Z to do the comp plan amendments for these CIPs.
Chief, was there something, anything else that you guys wanted to add?
No, I think, I mean, I appreciate Ann's work. This has been a process of the last eight months, culmination of eight months of work to come now. Obviously, it's our goal, from the Fire District standpoint, that we don't want to go to, we told the taxpayers this should be the last bond we go to, because we do believe growth should pay for growth. But part of that also depends on you all passing this on to the city council and recommending that we allow those new residences and those new commercial occupancies to pay for growth. As we look at target hazards coming, and we know, and I realize apartments are a bad word, but we look at that as a target hazard. I mean, we look at that as someplace that we go regularly for fire and medical calls. And to this point, we could build 20 new apartment buildings and they not pay for a new fire station or a new ladder truck that may be required or something like that, which is why we had to float the bond last spring, because we had not collected or not been allowed to collect impact fees. I think a couple of things that are really key is it's not just, the old law used to be that we could collect for bricks and mortar only. The new law accounts for rolling stock, which you can build all the fire stations in the world, but if you don't have a fire engine in them, it really doesn't matter. But a new fire engine is $800,000, a new ladder truck is 1.25 million dollars. You know, certainly, we anticipate that we are going to continue to grow. We understand we're in a growing community. In fact, yesterday, we hit 8,000 calls for the first time in a calendar year ever in our history and surpassed last year's call volume by about 600 calls so far. So we know that we're growing. We know that that's almost a 10% growth for us annually. We know that, in fact, we're working with the county on some land for Station Six that will eventually probably be annexed into the city of Post Falls anyway, but we're looking and projecting that. This just allows us to pay for it without having to come back to you, you all as citizen voters, and ask you to fund it in a different mechanism.
Any questions?
I have a quick question, and this is more just from my knowledge. How do the, the difference between residential and non-residential amounts? It's significant. So how is that because you get so many more calls? Is that how it's calculated?
No, actually, I'm sorry, I should have made this clear. It's residential per unit and non-residential per square foot.
Okay, okay.
Yes, yes. That would be really weird, wouldn't it? Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And can I just, so this also, this is a projection based on history. So if all of a sudden we stop approving new houses, but we get 6 million square feet of commercial instead of 1.2 million square feet of commercial, obviously, it changes the money collected, and then we come back and readjust our impact fees up or down even, depending on the use. I mean, we had to use the previous year's projections. We know that right now there's, there is a significant uptick in commercial requests. So, I mean, that may drive things one way or another. Did that answer your question, Commissioner?
Yes.
Other questions?
I had two. You answered one of them with regards to the rolling stock, because that wasn't something we considered with our city of Post Falls Police Department. That was not allowed then. The second question I had has to do with the dollars. So the existing infrastructure that we have in rolling stock was paid for by tax dollars out of a levy, right? So whatever levy we have, or whatever taxes, property taxes.
Property taxes, yes.
So property taxes. Is the future projected property taxes of the growth incorporated into this?
What we do is we identify whether or not additional, I mean, obviously, as you grow, you widen your tax base, you have additional property tax. The problem is that almost all of that property tax gets eaten up by paying for new firefighters. So there is this revenue stream, and in the past, they could have used those property taxes that were generated by growth to pay for both, you know, engines and people. Legislation last year with House Bill 389 severely restricted the amount of money they could even get from the growth. And so this is why our districts are really looking at, we need to save all of our property tax dollars to pay for bodies. We'll use our impact fee tool to make sure that growth pays for itself. Does that answer your question?
I think so.
And the other piece of that would be, so this pays for the, so we have Station Six to be built in relatively four to five to six years. We'll have to buy an engine with that, we can buy that with impact fees. But 10 years after that, when it's time to replace that engine, because the life of an engine is 10 to 12 years, it's no longer impact fee eligible. So then you have to pay for it with regular tax, regular tax dollars.
Okay, so the tax dollars handle replacement costs further on down the line?
Yes.
And so that, that's what, that's, you kind of save that off the side in the piggy bank, so to speak, to cover that stuff?
And that creates sort of this intergenerational equity of taxpayers continuing to, to pay for the non-growth-related share of things going forward.
So impact fees are just the new stuff, new stuff?
Correct.
New acquisitions, whether it be trucks, property, or any of that growth?
Station Six, like I said, four to five to six years from now, Station Six is going to go in the northwest corner of the city, and it would pay for the truck. So it would probably be a ladder truck and a brush truck and a tender and the nine radios we would have to have for the firefighters there and the nine air packs that we would have. Anything over $5,000 is considered a capital item. So those sort of things, that it would pay for that. But it could not pay for the nine to 12 firefighters we would have to hire to staff that station.
I'm sorry, so I'm Bill Keel, I'm the chief of EMS. I have 15 ambulances, they have to be replaced through my tax street. Only any new ambulances I buy directly related that I can pay for with impact fees.
Right.
And then when they need to be replaced, the four that I need, they have to come from tax money. So it's a one-time new piece of equipment that you can use the impact fees on. Everything else has to come from my regular tax.
Okay, so just so I get this right, so you have four, say you had four ambulances in your fleet. You wanted a fifth one, so then that could be impact fee. But if you were replacing one of the four, it would be regular tax. Okay, gotcha.
And five years from now, when he needs to replace the fifth one, it's back to property tax.
And the idea would be that incremental tax increase between now and five years from now is going to pay for that.
That's the theory, yes.
That's the theory, right?
So would it be fair to say that if this is for capital improvements, previously, you'd have proposed a bond and the voters would have voted directly if they wanted to spend the money? And now we're going to put it in as an impact fee?
Well, these aren't.
And they really won't have the chance to vote?
Your existing taxpayers?
Yes.
Will not pay these, unless they're buying a new house, I mean, if they're building a new house.
Everybody will pay it, but I believe.
Pays one time at building permit, so it's only if I'm pulling a building permit.
You could, you could say that, but that's not really how it works. I mean, it'll, if the building costs an extra $1,400 to build, the rent's going to go up $140, and if those rents are $140 higher, all rents go up $140. And so I think it'll be paid by everybody. I think it's more of a matter of who, of how voters choose to pay and pick what they want.
So without impact fees, we are requiring the existing taxpayers to subsidize the cost of growth. And, and yes, you just decide if you have the adequate resources to keep doing it that way, just do it the way that you've already done. It's because it is not a tax, it's a point of purchase of that building permit. It's, you have a point of decision whether or not to pay for it if you're going to build in Post Falls or not, for example. But, but yes, in the end, they all become the same people, and it does continue to filter down.
I think it's important to remember the city of Post Falls already collects impact fees for residences, and I believe it's in the neighborhood of total of 7,000, roughly $7,500 per residence. And I forget how much it's, it's over a dollar a square foot for commercial. So you're collecting that for just city services like roads, police, parks, recreation.
How would this affect the bonds, then?
It doesn't at all, because the bonds are to be used for the non-growth-related, the replacement of existing stations.
So the tax dollars and the bonds?
Right, so you have tax dollars that everyone pays normally, and that's going to pay for ongoing expenses. You've passed, they passed a bond, and taxpayers said, we'll pay for these three stations that are already bad and need to be replaced. Then the impact fees would be a third funding source for, this is the part that's just needed for growth, so we'll have growth pay their proportional share of this part.
Okay, okay.
Any other questions?
Yeah, next steps. Obviously, we're one city within the county with many fire districts. Does everybody have to play together to get this going forward?
Everybody has to play together, and that's why I'm magic and amazing, yes. Which is why I need to leave in about five minutes to go to Hauser to magically make, yes. We, we started this process all together so that we could do this regionally and not have one-offs, because that's where you get into trouble. So my job has kind of been to herd, herd, herd as we've gone. The county commission is supportive, we'll be talking to them again tomorrow. I have no concern about them adopting in the unincorporated areas. We've already pre-briefed all of the cities, so they knew this was coming. We've talked to their city attorneys. So I feel rather confident that everyone will play, and if not, I will resort to pouting and crying if necessary.
Field, is there anything that we need to move forward? No motion, no?
So procedurally, I would, I would do a motion just to move forward a recommendation. If you want to do that at this time, we can do that at this time. Staff would bring back a recommendation at the next meeting for approval. We can do that. This will be going to, the reason we did it this way is to bring it to you early, because we will be bringing forth a comprehensive plan amendment, because in order to implement the capital improvement plan, we actually have to amend our comprehensive plan to incorporate their capital improvement plan in order for us to collect the impact fees. And then, subject to an interdepartmental agreement, we turn the impact fees over to them, so.
So it's really, it's pretty simple, okay?
That is the process.
So we cannot, we cannot, it's because it happens with the building permit, and we don't issue the building permit, we can't collect the fees.
Right.
So the city and the county, as the issuers of the building permit, have to collect the fees.
Yeah, makes sense.
So we will be bringing back a comp plan amendment, which is a notice public hearing. And at that time, we would be possibly moving forward a recommendation from you guys to the city council, because.
If I can clarify, it would be helpful just for, for history's sake to have this DFAC or advisory committee make, make some motion about whether or not they accept these two reports, because then I can get it back to you as P and Z, once I have just that paper trail of.
It would be a motion to recommend?
Yes.
Okay.
Because you are advisory in this capacity, yes.
And recommend to the city council?
Yes.
Yes.
That they, that they proceed with these reports as written or as not written or.
Yeah, you're, as the impact fee advisory committee, you are to review the plan, propose possible amendments, if any, and file written comments as your.
We are simply advising.
I would just want to point out one more thing as, as an item of discussion. And that's that, you know, so if we have $8,000 in impact fee on a new unit, that's just a direct funding mechanism for our government, whether you consider a fee or a tax. But when we have a levy, that's something that's voted on by the members of the community, and they get to have direct input on how money is spent. And I don't view that, it's not like there's a magic new guy moving in that's just going to pay this money. We have a, we have a housing shortage, and any fees that we add on to a new building add to the rent and make it more difficult to add housing and make it more difficult for people to pay rent. And that's my concern with all impact fees. These are our people that are paying rent in the community, and if we have a direct funding mechanism for our government entities without going to the ballot, you know, we're, we don't give the people much of a voice in whether we do or don't add these capital expenditures.
But that's what we've been hearing at all our council meetings from the people, is you're not making the builders or making people come in, pay for their services. That, you know, we're paying for it in our taxes that we've already been paying and stuff, and we're not making new people pay for what they're bringing, you know, building or doing.
I understand the argument, I just don't really think that there's a way to make just the new people pay. It gets immediately spread out.
In the trickle-down.
Goes into rents, and it goes to everybody immediately. So I think it's just semantics and presentation, and I think really. And I think really it comes down to how you want to pay these taxes and fees that get borne by everybody.
You know, I agree with some of that, but the part that concerns me is like, so the police, they get impact fees, right? Where they collect. So, and you know, they're a service, a necessary service, but so is fire and rescue. If you've ever had a loved one have a heart attack or something like that, having these people come to your house is incredible. They're incredibly trained. And I think they're necessary. And sometimes maybe we think, well, you know, the police are there for a reason, do a wonderful job. But again, I think so is fire and rescue. And I think sometimes we overlook all the things that they show up to, all the services that they provide. And it's important that they're funded. And I've never been a big one for having a lot of huge impact fees, impact fees, impact fees. It's, but this is a different environment that we're living in right now. Our, things have just kind of, our population has just really exploded. And I think we're lacking in our fire and rescue and our police keeping up with that. So I think this is worthwhile.
And I in no way, shape, or form want to try to, anybody to misunderstand what I'm saying, that I'm questioning the value of any entity that we have. That's absolutely not what I'm saying. This is just a discussion of what's the best way to let the people decide what capital expenditures they want to have.
I think this is one of those hard things where we don't have a very, currently don't have a voting population that's super excited about paying taxes. And so, and there's more people of similar ilk moving here. And so I, we, I think impact fees are a good thing. They're a great thing for a fire district or an EMS service in a time of growth. Unfortunately, I think, I've seen several municipalities lean on impact fees and fees in general to not raise taxes or not, you know, keep up. And in times of slow growth, which happen, they have really fallen on hard times. And so one thing I do think that this allows us to do, or would allow them to do, would be to say, whoa, 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 timeout. We're making growth pay for growth. This is to keep us healthy. And then to be able to allow them to levy tax rates and put levies out there that are moderate, that are reasonable, that they have a good, successful chance of actually getting approved by the voting public. And they can be as much or as little as they need to be. I think growth's going to happen. It'll be cyclical. It always is. We just happen to be in a really high, high growth spurt right now. And the growing pains are evident, obviously. So I think this, from that standpoint, I think it's necessary. Ross, I agree with you. I think it's going to get passed along to those people who, you know, it's not just people who are moving here. The growth for apartments is going to get passed on to the kids who are graduating from high school and moving into apartments with all their buddies. And, you know, that's, it's unfortunate. We've got a different type of crisis. I don't know if this is a, this is not helping it when it comes to housing costs. But I also don't think that we can, we should sacrifice life safety for that. So I think it's necessary in that regard.
Obviously worthy of continued discussion, but I think at this point, there's no one that wishes to stymie the movement and continuation of this, it sounds like. Sounds like we will have more discussion from impact fee committee and a commission with planning and zoning. So does someone want to make a motion or?
I would move that we recommend acceptance of the two draft impact fee, well, one's a draft, one's a final.
That is, because some other cities have already adopted it for the EMS. It's kind of a semantic.
Okay, so I will recommend that we accept both impact fee reports as presented. And, or recommend that the city.
Yeah.
I'll second.
Got a motion to second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote?
Stephenson?
Yes.
Kerry?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Schlatter?
Yes.
Hampi?
Yes.
Three quick things as you're leaving. Ann, thank you very much. Two, chief, we appreciate everything that you're doing. And apartments aren't a bad word.
We have to serve them all. Thank you, commissioners.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Apartments. Do we need a break, folks? Are we, can we roll?
Let's roll.
I'm good. I do apologize for being late. I had, for some reason, thought this started at six. Totally. Just my brain freeze.
We don't blame, well, we might blame you. All right, we'll go ahead and open a public hearing. Blue Spruce Meadows subdivision. Mr. Porter, it is all yours.
Good evening, commissioners. Ethan Porter is one of the associate planners here at the city of Post Falls. Here to present the Blue Spruce Meadows subdivision, which if it sounds familiar, it should because it's been approved in the past already. We are here tonight to re-approve it as there was state noticing requirements that weren't met through Coeur d'Alene Press as Mondays, they do a digital copy of the noticing and state law requires paper copy. So we are here tonight to basically redo the public hearing and then make it more official, essentially, meeting those requirements. So the same presentation that you see before you is what I presented on, just different background. So bear with me and forgive me for the repetitiveness. So. Owners is Wildflower Properties LLC. The applicant here tonight is A Solutions LLC. They request that they review, that you guys review and approve the proposed subdivision, modifying 18 duplex and two twin home lots into 38 twin home lots, meeting Post Falls municipal code. This is the Blue Spruce Meadows subdivision hatched in red there. It's to the west of Wildflowers Meadows. I'll go into the history about this property as well on the upcoming slides. But south of Midway and west of McGuire Road there, north of Gabrielle Estates subdivision. Property history, it came through and it was annexed. And then it went forward for the subdivision as well. Then it got amended. And then here is the second amendment that I'm presenting on that they reclassified or renamed it Blue Spruce Meadows just to keep it kind of clarity because the eastern portion of Wildflower Meadows was not being amended, just the, or the eastern portion was not being amended, just the western portion. And so with the new subdivision name, makes it a little more cleaner. But this is the flow of the overall subdivision as you see. And then here is the highlighted portion that's boxed in red. It's the western portion of Wildflower Meadows original. This is the Blue Spruce Meadows that they're asking to amend into the duplex lots, turning them into twin home lots, as you can see. So the twin home lots, the two that they do have already in the subdivision that's approved is on the south side, southeast corner. And then everything else is duplex lots. Current land use is single-family home right now. There's no identified topographical or vegetation issues that would impede any development. The water providers, East Green Acres Irrigation District and the sewer will be provided by the city of Post Falls. Zoning is R2. As you can see here, it's the hatched in black. The whole Wildflower subdivision was annexed in as R2. And so the east and west portions are R2. Looking at the, what they're asking for, the proposed subdivision there is on the right-hand side of the screen or the left, depending on which way you're looking at it. There's no density change from the approved to this amendment. It is all basically lot count. They're just increasing the lot sizes, but duplex and twin homes essentially are the same thing. Just the difference is a lot line running in a common wall separating one structure into two. So it really comes down to you're more likely to own a twin home lot than a duplex lot. So usually you'd see more rentals and duplexes. While the twin homes, you'll see more actual people, real ownership of those lots. So here you can see the max size is the minimum lot size that's proposed. They meet the requirements for Post Falls municipal code in the subdivision portion as far as the lot sizes and lot widths. Looking at the review criteria for subdivisions, we look at the water supply and the sewer. And as mentioned, East Green Acres Irrigation District would be serving this. City of Post Falls would be serving this and does have capacity for the system. The street layout is consistent and pose no issues, as you can probably see within the staff report. No concerns there from staff. Looking at the soil and topographical conditions, as mentioned earlier, there's no issues there on site that would prevent any development or hinder any development. And then looking at number five there, the area proposed for the subdivision is zoned as R2, as I mentioned before. That is applicable for this type of request for twin homes. Number six ensures that the community is not going to bear their more, their fair share of costs to provide services. So through impact fees, as we just got done discussing, impact fees would basically be paying for multimodal transportation, public safety streets, that sort of thing for impact fees. The agencies that were notified are here. And of these agencies, we only had one comment back from the police department for this time around, and they remain neutral. So. Here you can see, I'll leave on this slide, the difference of what they're, what it is approved as now and what they're asking. So I would entertain any questions that you have at this time.
This is exactly what we've had presented to you. Okay, yep.
I didn't say it word for word, but it's pretty darn similar.
Okay.
Could have just said ditto.
I wanted to.
Any questions?
Would like to make one clarification just for the record. So when this was originally applied for, we didn't have our current city code. Our current code requires that lots in the R2 that are less than 45 feet or less be rear-loaded. Being in the fact that this is a continuance from a previous decision, it would be considered vested from the time of the application.
Right.
So I just wanted to make that known for the record that if the same application came in today, they'd be, they need to be rear-loaded.
Right. Good point. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Invite the applicant up.
Good evening. Roger Glessner with A Solutions, 609 Calgary Court, Post Falls, Idaho. We're here representing the owners and applicant for this project. As Ethan said in the staff report, this has come before you before, and it was approved at one time. We are changing the, we're not changing the density on this project, but we're rather, we're changing the product. So we're going from duplex buildings to twin homes, which gives more of an ability to have more affordable housing as well as ownership in the product. We believe that that, you know, that's a better stepping stone for first-time homeowners to build a, afford to get into these and then move up to something bigger at a later date. Also, it helps provide for the elderly, for smaller units. The, so the density doesn't really change on this with this application. The traffic doesn't really change. The impact to sewer and water and any of the other facilities doesn't really change. I think that's about it. If anybody has any questions?
Questions for applicant?
Nope.
No? All right. Thank you. Public comment in favor?
None.
Neutral?
None.
Opposed? So no need for rebuttal. Commissioners, any questions this time around? None? Okay. I'll go ahead and close the hearing and open up for general. Any comments? Anything change?
Nope.
Okay, I guess at this point then, we would entertain a motion.
I'd move to approve subdivision filed SUBD 0011-2021, Blue Spruce Meadows subdivision, finding that it meets the requirements. The subdivision code, city of Post Falls, and adopting conditions 1 through 10 is found in the staff report.
Second.
Got a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Call for vote?
Hampi?
Yes.
Schlatter?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Kerry?
Yes.
Stephenson?
Yes.
All right, this brings us to the last public hearing this evening. That's not me, right? Okay, hot mic. We'll go ahead and open up Title 17 amendment. Mr. Manley.
Yes, Title 17 amendment, file number TA3 2021. Planning divisions, the applicant on this. We're looking to amend Post Falls Municipal Code Section 17430 pertaining to lot line adjustments. The proposed changes are detailed in the Exhibit S1, the draft ordinance. Reason for this request is the lot line amendment process at times have been used to, do we have conditions for improvements that often are tied to development agreements and/or subdivisions that gets tied to plating or other means? And the use of lot line adjustments can sometimes get out of doing those otherwise required improvements. So looking at kind of the meat of these changes in 17430 is clarifying under the exemptions to subdivision ordinance. So if you meet this, these sections, you wouldn't have to do all the improvements tied to a subdivision, be it frontage improvements, sidewalk swell curb, or other side of public improvements tied to a subdivision. What do you got in your bucket? I know, I get up over there. I don't got metal in the head. Okay, so looking at these exemptions, so we're clarifying subsection D within this. Only one common lot line between two lots or parcels can be adjusted. So we're really constraining it to two lots, one common line that you can shift between those two lots. Any other configuration, you wouldn't be exempted from the subdivision ordinance. Looking at E, adding some additional language, that's what the underline means there, is you couldn't, within 365 days of a calendar year, you can only do one boundary line. If you were to do more, you wouldn't be exempted. You'd be triggering the subdivision ordinance.
On this particular parcel, on one particular?
Yeah, whatever the case is, you do a BLA. If you come in within 365 days, you wouldn't qualify for doing a BLA. You potentially could do it, but you potentially could do it, but we'd be going through the subdivision process, triggering those frontage improvements.
Okay.
Item F, once again, added language, that the lot line adjustment must be consistent with all the conditions of the approval of the agreements regulating development and use of the property, including but not limited to the annexation agreements, development agreements, and regulating plans. Once again, if you're doing a boundary line adjustment to get out of doing otherwise improvements tied to some other guiding document, master plan document, that wouldn't qualify for being exempted. Item G, some additional language here as well, that we would use the process for minor subdivision review and approval for these exempted ones. And so when I say process, that means notifying adjacent neighbors as part of the process, doing that for the minor subdivision, getting comments and taking that in consideration for the proposed BLA prior to final determination, which is done at an administrative level. That's pretty much the gist of those four additional elements to 430. I think I've heard from some members, they not necessarily want one common lot line. Sometimes some of the comments we received, they want two with three parcels, three with four. So we've heard different input from that on different individuals. So any sort of these items you guys want to talk about? You're free to.
What if two, what if the two parcels shared two lines and they're L-shaped nested in each other? Would that be considered one line or two lines?
To me, the way I would interpret it is one line that bends in an L. Without further clarifications on what defines one common lot line, to me, you'd have the two parcels and you'd have one common line that bends in it.
It doesn't have to be exactly a straight line, it just has to be two parcels, which.
Without a definition of what one common lot line is, I would interpret it as any line between two parcels.
So as someone who gets to do boundary line adjustments, we do them in, I've done many of them. I've done some in Post Falls, but in jurisdictions throughout the Northwest. Two lot, you know, it's a tool that we use a lot of times just to clean up things. Like for instance, a fence builder puts a fence in the wrong spot, and the neighbors, instead of tearing out the fence and putting it in the right spot, just decide that they'll do a boundary line adjustment and move the property line to the fence. And, you know, one thing that came to mind that where this becomes problematic is that, you know, that could involve multiple property owners. For instance, like a back lot line of lots, you know, two rows of lots lining up to each other, but not all the lot lines, you know, it could affect two or three property owners if you're adjusting one fence line. And, or even more. And it's, it restricts a tool that is really, really handy. And I don't know if there's, I haven't heard a good reason why it's just two lots. And I think, I, I mean, I, I've got an idea with regards to that because my understanding is that one of the reasons for this is, is that the way the code is written now, someone utilized it to jump a right-of-way line and take lots from one side of a block and put them on another block. And that's not the, that's not the purpose of a boundary line adjustment typically. Now someone kind of jumped through a loophole. And I think if we were to amend D to say that parcels being adjusted must be adjoining parcels and may not be separated by a right-of-way, that makes it so that you can adjust, parcels have to be adjoining. They can't be taking out two lots over here and make two lots over here and one lot over here. It's not how you do it, that they got to be adjoining. And that way, it, it leaves that tool in place, which is super important for the community as a whole. Not developers, but, you know, just regular people who might have a boundary dispute or, you know, oh, hey, I made an agreement with Bill next door that I'm going to shift the property line five feet to get around his doghouse or something. Those things, they come up all the time. And it's, it's important that, for the community, that we don't restrict that, that it's, that we be able to have the ability to shift things around a little bit. I mean, I had one where a builder picked the wrong property corner or thought he picked, thought it was a property corner, but it wasn't a property corner, and he built three houses in a row, all cattywampus. And we had to shift three lot lines, all three of them, to adjust. And we wouldn't be able to do that under this code. And so there'd be tearing down, you know, they found out when they were putting up drywall. So, I mean, it's.
John, what was the situation that, that had you, that created this?
There's been some stuff going on, the, to be straight, the landings down here, some BLAs that have been gone down here. We have conditions in that development agreement pertaining to the esplanade and other improvements based off of time of plating. So, you know, you look at this one right here, F, I think that would capture some of those interests for development agreements and annexation agreements. That was the trigger. And then we have had one where they moved lots from one side in a separate plat, and they did a BLA and then got it recorded on the other side of the right-of-way as part of a different plat. So those are, it was kind of an unusual usage for doing a BLA. Same token, I also know a site where it is honestly just two, it's, it's a single-family home and their rear yard is a separate lot, and they did a BLA so they can go around the house, so they can do a subdivision. So it doesn't trigger the frontage improvements because it's not adjacent to where they're doing the subdivision, but they use the BLA. This one, the way this is written, doesn't address that either in that scenario. And that's an issue that I talked with legal prior to this public hearing, is how would this affect that? Because, you know, this one was on Corbin. So you wouldn't get any sidewalk swell curb, but the backyard gets houses on it. So how do you address that?
And John, I think we might, like, if we were to address that, I think you could probably add something to F that would state that a boundary line adjustment cannot be used to get out of, or in conjunction with a future subdivision to get out of frontage improvements or something. I don't know, that, that's some legal stuff.
Or the remainder lot is subdivided within three years.
Right. Or, I mean, that, that can be a tough one too. That can be really, really tough, because if you go the, the three-year limitation or, or because sometimes you, sometimes it happens where you do a boundary line adjustment to clean up a property line before you subdivide. For instance, you know, the guy next door, his fence is five feet onto the property, and you do a boundary line adjustment to clean that up, and now you're stuck with doing his frontage improvements? Because his was part of a, you know, it's got to be, if there's an overt act to try to get away from or get out of doing frontage improvements, that's not right.
And sometimes it's a corner lot. What they'll do is you'll do a BLA, and the house is on the corner, and so you end up with the frontage improvements for the subdivision, but your key pedestrian connectors that are on the corner for the intersection don't get improved. And you're waiting for perpetuity, because now you're left with a quarter acre lot or a half acre lot right on the corner.
Right.
And you may never get that without doing some capital improvement project.
Right. And that's not the point. I mean, the point would be to cover that, but at least give, leave the ability to utilize it as a tool that's, that gives the director the flexi, or, you know, staff the flexibility to say, no, 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 you're trying to get away from something versus, or get around something versus actually for a legitimate, you know, reason. You know, that's non-nefarious, so to speak.
Yeah, but how do you put that in here?
That's why I'm not an attorney.
I agree with you. I agree with you totally.
I mean, this is, these are talking points, because this is something that, I mean, Field's going to have to figure out on how to, how to do that. Because it's, I don't, or I think you should figure out how to do that, because it's, it makes it difficult. It's punishing the normal people for the acts of the rare few that are screwing things up for everybody else.
Yeah, classically, it's something that average people have done. And it's quick and it's easy, and it's not a lot of, you're not going through all of the subdivision process to do something simple. And I think, you know, we don't, we want to preserve that, but I understand what we're, we don't want people ducking, you know, developers ducking frontage improvements. So there's got to be a, I think it's got to be crafted where we still have the benefits without the.
So ultimately, this is the thing, because we're on the same page, the occasional day-to-day issue, we want to provide opportunity for that and not stymie that, but we definitely want to deal with abuse and eliminate that, which is all but impossible. But is it something that we can send back to legal for fine-tuning?
What I think you can do is, this is a legislative item, we can talk about it. We can put it forward with comments to council, proposed changes. We can include additional language, we can strike language, we can change it, we can come back to it. We can do whatever, whatever we want, you know.
So we can say, go back and try again, or we can say, not too bad, we'll put it forward, we recommend this change.
We can do everything but that. I've got, there's one more thing I think was G. This is kind of a weird thing where we have exemption from the subdivision ordinance that then sends you to the subdivision ordinance to, to deal with it. So this is a boundary line adjustment, this is like under exemptions for subdivision ordinance, and then it says, no, to do a sub, to do a boundary line adjustment, go to the subdivision ordinance.
Ooh, that would really tie the hands, wouldn't it?
That, what, what it does is it goes to the minor subdivision where it says, oh, you have to look at water and sewer and fire hydrants and send it out to agencies and all these things. And I've got a solution that I think will probably work, because we want to have a trigger or a method for, not reinvent the wheel for staff. And I found one in the code, and it's under, it's a different part of the code, I get it. But we could probably copy it to this part of the code. And it's under the administrative exceptions, 1820150D, where it's, a permit for an administrative exception may be approved. So you could say a permit for a boundary line adjustment could be approved, approved with modifications or denied by the zoning administrator. And that you have to consider that the boundary line adjustment permit for the proposed boundary line adjustment would be consistent with the general intent of zoning ordinance and related provisions of this code. And granting that the boundary line adjustment has not been demonstrated to be detrimental to the neighboring development. And that written notice of the decision must be provided to the applicant and mailed to a budding or adjoining property owners. So I think that kind of takes care of the, the heavy-hitting parts of.
Gives these guys some discretion.
Gives you guys the discretion to use it and doesn't throw in, oh, hey, we got to get a hold of Yellowstone Pipeline. Or we have to get a hold of everybody and their brother and, and really take what's historically been an incredibly simple process and make it difficult. I mean, I, I don't know of any jurisdiction around that requires notification of agencies for a boundary line adjustment. It just, Post Falls would be the first. I've done a lot of boundary line adjustments in a lot of jurisdictions. And so I, I think it, instead of, because I know you guys were pushing, trying to figure out how to, how we process it. I think that's an alternate route that you might, that would be better than sending it through a minor subdivision.
So what do you think, what do you think, John?
I'm neutral on it. I mean, to me, just getting it documented and having something, but right now we have nothing in place. And so individuals go to the county and they record a BLA, and there's not, there's no say in it from.
It's great.
A lot of times, sometimes not.
Sometimes not.
So, all right, so D1, and specifically with two, approved divisions, the change that we have there, everyone, I'm assuming is comfortable with that. And we're comfortable with A, B, and C. It's when we get to D. D, there was some additional verbiage raised that you had put in for D?
Right. I think that parcels being adjusted must be adjoining parcels and may not be separated by a right-of-way. And I think that takes care of.
So focusing on adjoining, is everybody comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Okay. E, do we leave as-is or do we strike, do we change?
No, I think that's okay.
Okay.
I'm not a fan, but okay.
Come on, you gotta give us something here, Ray.
Right? No, I mean, it's fine.
So if that's, if that's in there, and it is a situation where, say, somebody's going to do a subdivision, but they need to move a lot, move a lot line to give their neighbor some room and include the fence, is that going to mean that they have to now wait a year to do the subdivision? Or is it going to mean that they need to include that as part of the subdivision?
No, you could, like, once it plats and you needed that extra five feet, it'd be the one-time deal. You would go in there and move that five feet to get around the doghouse or chicken coop or whatever it might be.
You just can't do it three times.
Or two times.
Or two times.
Two times in a year. So, and then you go do the subdivision like you normally would.
Potentially, if someone made an error, having a single time, you wouldn't be able to come back to it again for another year, but.
I think it's reasonable.
Okay. F?
So you don't want to screw up.
F, is everyone comfortable with F, lot adjustment, consistent with all conditions of approval agreement?
Yeah.
Yep. I think that covers a lot of the parts that are.
Everybody else? Okay, so F is good. G, did you have changes to that or recommendation?
That was the one where I think we need to take it out of the subdivision section and, and make it like 18.20.150D.
And I think that's enough direction to let staff draft something to move that forward.
We don't need to make a motion or anything, we basically have the necessary items laid out now?
Yeah, no, I, I think, so I guess what I was trying to say is knowing where to look, I think that the language is clear enough that, that it would be able to be adapted by legal to move forward to city council.
Anything else on this matter? Okay? Then we need not worry anymore about that at this moment?
Oh, no, I would still.
That's what I was thinking.
I would still make the motion.
So, again, we're fine with two, A, B, and C. We need to add verbiage to D, E and F are fine, and G needs to make the change. I'm going to go out on a limb here and guess that since he has all the notes, that Ray would be willing to make the motion, but I don't want to put you.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
The motion king.
This is a recommendation, right?
Yeah.
I would move to recommend to the city council approval of text amendment TA 0003-2021. Adopting an amendment to item D, striking out the previous stated text and replace it with parcels being adjusted, must be adjoining parcels and may not be separated by a right-of-way. Just telling people to do things, the same thing twice. And also adopt, or changing G so that instead of directing to the subdivision ordinance for the process, it copies the administration, administrative exception model found under 18.20150D.
Been a motion, do we have a second?
Yeah, a second there.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote.
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Steph, or, excuse me, Schlot Howard?
Yes.
Campy?
Yes.
All right. Administrative or staff reports, do we have anything else to cover this evening?
Uh, no. Do want to note, there was also no unfinished or old business.
I appreciate you keeping me in check with that. Also, do we want to remind everyone the additional December meeting, correct?
Yes. Do we have an additional December meeting?
No.
Okay.
We have an additional January meeting.
Fantastic, just wanted to make sure and clarify that.
And potentially one in February, because we're already full in February, so stay tuned on February.
And we're 5:30 starts, just to get that clear.
Yes.
Whether we're the impact fee.
Whenever you can get here.
Well, that's what threw me off, the impact fee was, so I thought everything started at six. So I was just puttering around, giving the dogs snacks.
Well, we're glad that you're here. Commissioner comments, anything for the good of the order?
Merry Christmas.
Yes. Merry Christmas, thank you guys all for your due.
Happy New Year.
Okay. If nothing else, I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
I so move.